It was hard for me to stay oriented. First I'd say, "Okay, this is South Salem." And suddenly I'm like, "No, I think this is West Salem." Well, wait a minute, this looks like...I thought, "Oh."
You take the hills, you take the hills out of things.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it looked like a fun.
You know, I made a statement about this Sunday. You realize how green and all of them are. Did you have a nice Easter?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Just, uh, Molly and I came back there for a few weeks. They'll be here for a few weeks, but we just, like, roll into town, just in time for Easter.
That's good. Okay. How are you doing, Chuck? I'm okay. This is my fifth meeting today. I'm all right now, yeah? I'm okay. Well, your days are like that.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm not? Yeah, I kept thinking I was, you know. Yeah, my tax accountant daughter thinks that this is not a good long-range plan. She was so stunned when I told her. That's why she said, "Mother," she said, "Mother, this is not a good tax move for you." Oh, she's funny. Oh, I wonder if everyone's gonna be here? Have you heard? I know. Uh-huh. Taking a little bit to get over here. I think we need to. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Oh, and Laura's here. Diana, Dan. Okay, I think we'll get started, though. Hi there, how are you? Good, I'm fine, thank you. Okay, yeah, I think we'll get started. Yeah. Okay, and then we'll get started.
Microphone eight, microphone eight. Good?
Microphone seven, microphone seven, microphone seven. Good.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, good, because I was...
But I need to have you remind me what it is we planned. I told her, "Don't worry, we got a plan."
I was like, "Ah, he's the Pope Minister," but I'll just remind him.
April 24th, is that right? Good? 25th, Monday, April 25th. John Wales, are you ready? Okay.
John Wales, the interim director at the Urban Development Department, and want to thank you for the opportunity to...can you hear? No. You can't hear. Now you can hear. Okay. We'll try to do that a little bit closer. All right. Tonight, I just want to remind you that this is a work session. We want to cover a lot of information. We want to give you some background on the airport, give you some suggestions about where we would like to be going over the coming year, and to give you a sense of some of the priorities and key decisions that are going to be made in the coming months. But before we get started, I'd like to say that there's been a lot of activity, and I think most of you, if you've been reading the papers, are fully aware of activity going on at the airport these days. We've just opened up our new terminal last week. Welcome to new commercial airline Seaport that actually started today with commercial service to Portland and Seattle. But we've also been spending a lot of time looking at the airport as an asset, and looking at its opportunities, particularly its economic development opportunities for the future. We've been looking at the infrastructure. It's an older infrastructure that's going to need improvements. We've been looking at our budget. We've been looking at the financial composition of the airport, and where the opportunities are to grow, and where the opportunities aren't to grow at this point. But one of the next big projects that we had on our plans was the expansion of the runway. And as many of you know, in the past, about 60 days ago, we learned that the cost of that expansion was going to be a lot more expensive than we had thought. And so we have spent the past two months looking at ways that we could either refund or package another funding plan for the airport with federal and state money in order to make that program happen. Now, there are no decisions that need to be made tonight, but in a couple weeks, on May 9th, we're going to be coming back with a staff report in council to see whether you want us to proceed with that, put in place that funding package of both FAA and state funds over the next four years to proceed with the funding of the airport runway extension. And along with that will be a decision on whether we want to proceed with the environmental assessment that will start that process. But tonight, we think it would be helpful to give you some background, give you some information and some context on which to make that decision. And so we are going to talk about the very things that I've just mentioned about the airport as an asset, about the infrastructure, about the funding strategy, about the airport finances as they currently stand and the opportunities, and then give you a perspective of what we think some opportunities for the future might be. I'm going to turn this over to Mark Juckt, who's the new airport manager for the city of Salem, and we welcome your questions afterward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Juckt, and I have been busy evaluating all the projects you have about to get started at the airport. There are a wide variety of them, and we're trying to work a lot of them in parallel and get things going in the proper sequence, so...
Excuse me, Mark, be sure you speak right into the microphone, otherwise we won't pick up your voice.
Okay. I can hear through these speakers. I'll talk a little louder, though. So let's go through the slides fairly quickly, because we do have a lot of information. We want to first focus on the future. You have a tremendous asset that sits on over 750 acres, and we're trying to preserve all the different options for the business and take advantage of them as the time is right. So we're putting the plan in place and trying to improve the infrastructure. The immediate focus is going to be on the environmental assessment. So we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but it's a key piece that has to get started before we do the runway extension. The FAA is...has a process where they go through the Fonzie after the environmental assessment is complete, and after that is done, then we can start the actual work. As mentioned, you have 715 acres at the airport, and the city has put a lot of development into those acres already. You have about 70 acres that are poised and ready for additional hangars and new space out there. Some of those things alone can generate a lot of new revenue and have a great potential, because they're on taxi lanes and ready for aircraft as soon as the buildings are up. You have a 7,800-foot runway, which is fine for general aviation, but not so fine for larger commercial aircraft. You have a 139 certification, which a lot of airports this size would love to have, but we've worked hard to keep that maintained, and we recently went through a new airport certification program and updated our manual. It was one of the first things we did when I got here. The contract tower, which has been in operation at Salem, I think, since the beginning of history almost, but the tower covers about 50,000 operations or had in the past. Recently, those numbers have been down, and they continue to decrease primarily January and February. A lot of that was due to weather, and there just was not a lot of pilot activity in the general aviation community. Also, we have an instrument landing system that pilots can take advantage of in low-visibility conditions. So those are some of the key things that commercial pilots look for, is the tower, the runway length, and that you have instrument landing so they can take off even if it's a cloudy or foggy day. The airport also has favorable lease rates, and the landing fees are only charged to commercial operators. So none of the general aviation community pays a landing fee. They pay a fuel flowage fee in lieu of that. And the airport covers the costs of really the infrastructure, keeping the lights on, and all the basic primary functions that happen at the airport. So it's a very business-friendly climate. And then, lastly, I wanted to point out that although you do have noise complaints, they are less than 1% of the total operations at the airport. One of the key things that we have looked at with the economic impact is that the direct payroll from businesses on airport property generate over $65 million every year. That's very, very impressive. So between Garmin and the National Guard and a lot of the other larger operators on airport property, that brings in a lot of jobs and creates an opportunity for these businesses to succeed on leased property. The regional economic impact, which then rolls up the sales of the products that those companies sell and that they distribute, is over $793 million a year, just from airport property. The city a couple of years ago put in $3 million from urban renewal area, and that investment opened up 20 acres to some additional development, which the city has seen some success with. In fact, the one hangar alone that was on the first slide returned that investment, or matched the URA investment with one single building. And there are many pieces of property out there that can be taken advantage of, so we want to use that new corporate hangar as a showpiece and make sure that other pilots and other folks in the region are aware that this asset is there and ready to go. Right now, we're working on the Airport Master Plan, which is a very comprehensive document that's required by the FAA. This document will help us and has already started to put some things in perspective with things that are needed to be done, and will also outline some of the key elements for growth, potential, new buildings, and where things can go for the proper-sized aircraft that we hope to accommodate in the future. The FAA requires a variety of things listed in the...before you hear, they do a complete inventory, they do forecasts of demand. Some of these slides are with us tonight, and if you have a minute to look at them, they did a forecast on passenger traffic. And if you take a look ahead to 2018, for example, Salem has the potential of boarding over 77,000 people out of this airport if the infrastructure were in place and once the economy comes back to a reasonable level. So this master plan takes a long-term look at the potential of facilities, making sure that you preserve the necessary land and the assets, the terminal building and other things that are necessary, making sure also that they're safe, secure, and ready to go. The airport has approved the scope, and they approved a partial funding for this program. We're hopeful that the other pieces of that will come from the current Connect Oregon II grant, and we have additional meetings with them, but in either case, the complete scope will be funded, and the project should be done later this year. This is a fairly comprehensive program. We have a fairly large working committee. There are 10 members that...you can see the list of people that are represented on the committee. In addition to that, there are a variety of city staff to make sure that each department is represented, along with the other 10 members on the group. So that is a fairly comprehensive working group, and we've had our first meeting. Second meeting will be June 22nd. So if anyone would like more specific details on the project, how it's going, the meeting will be at the airport in the hold room, and the meeting will start at 5:30 on June 22nd. Some of the things that have been done, the terminal expansion, for those of you who might have been out last week or may have stopped by, the terminal expansion is complete and operational, although we have some finishing touches and a few things yet to do. We had, I think, a pretty successful day today with Seaport starting their operation, and for an aircraft that holds nine people, Salem put on six people on the plane. So the folks at Seaport, I think, were quite pleased with that. Hopefully, the numbers for the rest of the week will continue to pick up, and the flights were on time. And I've already talked to some people who went up at 5:40 this morning, came back on the afternoon flight, and they were very impressed with the service and the comfort of the aircraft. The other thing that has been completed is the FAA justification for the runway extension. Again, this is one of the critical pieces that had to be done before the environmental assessment started. And that justification showed that it's warranted to build another 1,200 feet to bring your complete runway length to 7,000 feet. Other challenges that will come along with that, there have been some deferred maintenance issues at the airport. So in a combination of federal and state funding, we hope to consolidate a lot of those efforts and take care of a lot of those things for efficiencies of scale. Once we bid the big project, I think we can take care of a lot of our other electrical challenges at the same time. So the funding strategy. Again, the deferred maintenance, we have lighting, airfield, taxiway C. I think some of the folks at the airport realize a lot of the asphalt and pavement around the facility can certainly be improved, and we want to do those things at the same time we do some of the runway extension, for example, and get some economies of scale. The runway extension itself is, along with some of the things above, and about 1.3 and 1.5 million for the assessment and the design work that hopefully will be coming back to council in June. We want to start some of these things in parallel, even though the environmental assessment will take 12 to 18 months to complete. We want to start some of the preliminary design work so we make sure we find any other issues that may need to be identified early. We will be seeking a total of between 12.4 to 14.4 million dollars from the FAA over the next several years. And at this juncture, keep in mind that the numbers are just an estimate, and we're trying to create kind of a band, the highs and the lows of some of the projects, so we don't come back later, and we certainly don't want to be surprised. We want to make sure we're looking at things with our eyes wide open as we move forward. The construction environment by the year we're ready to build our runway may change. Hopefully, the economy will pick up, but we expect to have all the funds necessary to do the project. To give you a quick example, for those of you who might fly out of Portland, they just bid a project to redo their main runway this summer. It was about a $66 million project, just to reconstruct their runway. Their bids came in $8 million under engineers' estimate. So if we're ready with some of these projects in the future, there's no reason we can't take advantage of federal funding that will become available. The airport revenues, operating budget, you can see from the graph there that the majority of revenues come from leases, and the rest of it is tie-downs, parking fees, and other miscellaneous sources of revenue. But for the most part, it's an airport that does take advantage of the land leases that the hangars sit on, and where a lot of the businesses do their work, so we're trying to maximize those leases. The Urban Development Department has reviewed a lot of those over the past year and really tried to make sure that everyone is paying a fair and reasonable rate for all the property that is being used at the airport. Again, land leases are 92% of the total. Grants, looking at...one of the things I looked at is the history, because I think you can learn a tremendous amount from your history. And the Salem Airport, since 1948, has only received $11 million in total federal support. That equates to $180,000 a year. That's not a lot to take care of 715 acres. So I've had several meetings face-to-face with the FAA and laid out some of the projects, and they are in agreement that a lot of the asphalt and some of the conditions here need to be upgraded. The FAA is currently talking about next-generation landing equipment, and as we look at future projects, we want to make sure that we take advantage of those things and have the planning and the design ready to go for those things. So becoming a little more aggressive in having the plans in place will certainly help secure FAA funding. Seeking more than $9 million any calendar year is certainly not unusual, and if you have your plan in place, we're trying to work with the FAA early so that they have a clear understanding of what the expectation will be in a couple of years. Operating revenue and expenses, like most cities and communities, the budget right now, because of the economy, is tight. The fund balances in the short term are fairly marginal. Status quo strategy does not really support long-term maintenance for a 139 certificate. Looking at the current economy, I think everyone would probably agree that in a couple of years, with just the American spirit and other things, that things will begin to grow again. So looking at that, we want to make sure we're ready and have things in place for that. So revenue opportunities, first of all, is the ground leases. We mentioned earlier that we have about 70 acres that are ready to go, shovel-ready, and just if we can lease half of that property in the next several years, that'll generate over half a million dollars. For the airport, that will make a tremendous difference. So there's a lot of things to look at out there, and if we take advantage of some of the recent successes, as the hangar that we just toured last week, I think a lot of those things can be realized in the short term. This map just kind of outlines on the airport property a couple of key areas. The area on the top map is space between the National Guard and Garmin. There's a facility over there that would be quite attractive for a large development. The other space is at the south end of the airport property, and it's some of the property where the airport just built a new taxi lane and new access road, new access gate, and everything looks good and is ready for construction. So we're looking to provide a sustainable strategy, certainly maintain and grow things, but one of the key elements is the runway extension. That will preserve options for a wide variety of different businesses, not just commercial service, but the additional runway will provide opportunities for corporate aircraft. It will provide opportunities for other sorts of longer-range airplanes that can come in here, and keeping in mind that the newer aircraft are quieter aircraft. So as those things grow and the operations grow, we're hopeful that in the long run, they're also quieter and that they become a good neighbor. So we will be working on a business plan. The deferred maintenance, approximately $1 million in electrical systems alone are a lot of the old things that we want to begin to look at to bring things up to a new standard. As the runway is extended, we want to make certain that the circuitry marries up with the new lights and the extension, and everything can be incorporated well so that we don't have 30-year-old wiring and connecting it to regulators and other things that are brand-new that could cause some challenges, as you can imagine. So we're looking at a lot of those long-term things now. The annual marketing...excuse me, annual marking, maintenance, signage improvements, those are things we have to do on a routine basis to make sure that the pilots can clearly see things, that visibility is good, and that safety is the highest standard that we can provide. So some of those things, we just have a new maintenance person who's going to be starting. We have to provide a seven-day coverage at the airport for inspections and other things, so we're looking at a variety of different opportunities to do that in the most reasonable fashion. The status quo considerations, certainly we want to increase the aircraft operations. Right now, we're down to about 40,000. We want to see that number grow, and we just think, well, I think personally, that if we get the word out that we are looking at a long-range plan, that we're progressive, we do have the property to do these things, that the corporate community will certainly be looking very closely at coming in and developing on some of that 70 acres that is ready to go. We do have two leases that are on a 30-day cancellation term, and they do provide a sizable portion of the revenue. So that's a risk that's out there right now, but we feel that if we begin developing additional property, it will balance out some of those challenges that we're looking at. The runway extension, this is just a bit of a chart to take a look at where we're at. The environmental assessment is about a $390,000 project. The scope of this project was just completed. We got the dates here. I know you've probably been hearing about this longer than I have, but the scope was just completed on March 22nd of this year. So I've met with the FAA, we've talked about the details of that project. Now we have a hard number on what the actual work is going to cost, and we've talked to Connect Oregon to keep that under the current grant, so this should be funded with existing Connect II Oregon dollars. We want to start working a lot of these things in parallel. So right below that, you see the 30% design phase, and again, we feel important to start the design to take a look at other challenges that may exist. So once we get to the end of 2012, when the environmental assessment will be complete, we can turn the information over to the FAA. They will have approximately 90 days to complete the Fonzie, which is a finding of insignificance for any environmental concerns. Since the city already owns the property, we're hopeful that they will find that there were no impacts outside the property of the airport. And closely on the heels of that, we want to start the final design. Those pieces combined are going to be probably close to $1 million, just to do the design for all the work and all the details that go into the program. We're hopeful to bid the project by the end of 2013, start at 2014, and then, weather permitting, start early in the season of 2014 and complete all the work in one season. The FAA in the past has, even for Salem and a lot of airports, has broken projects of this nature into two separate years, and we've convinced them that it makes sense, from an economical standpoint, to plan for this long term and do the construction in one season. The runway extension, again, here preserves option for a variety of different business growths. The map here, which is also in your packet, this may be a little difficult to read, but the blue portion is the actual runway extension, would extend the 1,200 feet beyond the existing end of the runway, and the green portions are the two parallel taxiways that are necessary to meet the current FAA standards. Those additional taxiways are one of the big reasons that the price went up from the original estimate to what things...what way things are looking at right now. So we feel we put together a comprehensive package and looked at the details that are necessary to deliver a complete project. So the considerations, if the runway extension proceeds, it'll open the door to larger corporate jets, preserves options for passenger service, and those are the two primary advantages. The other things to consider, the local match, if this project bids in the $8 million range, the city has to find the 5% match, so that could be roughly $400,000. That money can come from a Connect Oregon grant if there are grants available later, and we're trying to maximize those state and federal revenues against one another or in parallel with one another, so we can keep some of those dollars available. The new bigger planes, again, are quieter, and standards have improved greatly over the past. So the staff assessment, keeping options open, maintaining an airport as a major economic development asset. I think a lot of times airports are overlooked, but the businesses out there operate effectively, efficiently, and there's a lot more room to grow. So extending the runway, the pieces that follow that, or I guess have to come before that, completing the environmental assessment and the master plan. The master plan is underway right now, and we expect that work to be done later this year, by this fall, September, October timeframe. By that time, the environmental assessment, if approved by council, will be in full swing, and we've already told the FAA that we want to make certain that we have full support of council, and that if this is the direction we go, that we will clearly be seeking all the funding from them that we possibly... and that if this is the direction that we go, that we will clearly be seeking all the funding from them that we possibly can and identifying all the issues that come up from the preliminary design. In conjunction with that, we want to work on a three-year business plan, making sure that we target some of those key businesses. Not all businesses in the community need an airport, but a lot of businesses use an airport. So, we're hopeful that we can target market a lot of the potential for the three-year term. We'll also assess the market for other aviation-related types of businesses and certainly get the word out. As we've met with some of these corporations, the pilots who are here in Salem love being here in Salem. They don't have to deal with traffic, they don't have to deal with congestion, they don't have to deal with a lot of other things. So, we want to focus on that key element as one, making sure that they understand what kind of assets we have available for their corporations to bring their aircraft here. And then, the key things that we can promote, again, general aviation, corporate development, industrial development. The military has some potential for adding their operations here and still looking at the potential for adding on additional passenger service. So, the message, May ninth, we will be coming back. We've presented the basic information here. We'll open up for questions here in a minute, but on May ninth, we hope to come back and seek approval to move forward with this consideration. For the runway extension project, the first piece of that will be considering authorization for the environmental assessment. We have the price for that. We have the group already, it's gone through the RFP process, so we're ready to proceed with that if council so agrees in two weeks. Then in June, we'd be looking at considering authorization for thirty percent design from an engineering group to start the design phase of the project. This fall, we expect to come back with a business plan. And then in the future, shortly after that, the master plan will be completed and we'll be reviewing the critical milestones and the potential that that document brings forward. And that, I brought some of the slides from, or some of the boards that were presented at the first master plan meeting. Shows some of the same things we've gone over already, but the slides to my left over there show some of the growth potential, show aircraft potential. And the last slide shows just the inventory of all the equipment and all the nav aids that are currently at the airport. It's a pretty impressive list of equipment that's in place today. So, I know I've covered a lot of information fairly quickly. Questions?
Yes, Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Clausen.
I had just a couple. On the runway extension plan that you showed us, there's a substantial protection zone that moves into a mobile home development. How does, how does that all fit together in the price? Is that part of what you're quoting us as a price, is somehow clearing out that protection zone?
Very good question.
Mark, excuse me, could you go back to that slide maybe that showed that runway and, yes, is this what you're talking about?
Yeah. So, you can currently see the blue trapezoid. The blue trapezoid is the area you're supposed to be protecting today. So, there's a variety of trailers in, there's a variety of mobile home park in this area. All these today, to meet the current standards, should be under your control. So, by extending the runway, the new, the red trapezoid actually diminishes the amount of property that would be impacted. So, in either event, we have to take a look at that for the future. So, it's one of the reasons we provided the range in the price. This, the acquisition of this property is eligible for federal grant. What the price is today, we're uncertain, but it's one of the reasons we want to start the preliminary design now so we can take a look at some of the specifics and some of the details that will have to come into play in two thousand fourteen.
Do the residents know about their situation? I mean, is there some sort of, I don't know, I assume they either buy or lease their land, lease their land, own their mobile, have they got some sort of knowledge of their situation, do you know?
I do not believe so. The standards on this particular issue have changed over the years. So, since this runway was first put in and FAA standards change on a regular basis. So, this is clearly something either way will have to be evaluated.
I think as a minimum, it would be very helpful for us to know what's going on there and how they're being notified or how this is being handled in conjunction with them, given both cases, existing runway protection zone requirements as well as the extended runway protection zone. That looks like a fairly substantial of number of people potentially impacted by this.
This particular park is, the trailers are on leased property.
They are on leased property, and so there's an underlying ownership that we're going to have. Do we have to own the property or do we?
Yes.
We can't just take a long-term lease and, okay. The other one that I wanted to ask about was the flowage fees that you charge or that are charged. It was five-point-nine percent. Did I understand that correctly?
The fuel flowage fee is six cents a gallon.
Six cents a gallon. And that's charged to the, I assume, to the FBO for his, are all the private tanks as well paying a flowage fee?
Yes.
Okay. So, any private tank that comes in is going to pay a six cent per gallon flowage fee?
Correct.
Okay. And then, just as an aside, one of the things I was mentioning in our council goal sessions, and I hope it'll be part of your three-year business plan or any extended business plan, is taking into account the importance of the FBO out there if we're going to be looking at general or corporate aviation. Just that I'm hoping we'll see a very clear picture of their economic survival in whatever or even hopefully success in whatever we're planning out there is one of the really fundamental businesses to the airport.
And what is that?
The fixed base operator.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Just that that, I think, has been of concern to me for a number of years, that that be really clearly delineated in any planning out there, that that operator be fundamental in the planning. I just don't know how you put on a general aviation airport or a corporate airport without a really successful FBO.
That's a very good point. And three to four years ago, you had operations that were about eighty thousand per year. You're at half of that now. So, the key is growing your operations, whether it's general aviation, corporate, or passenger traffic. All those things will lead to a more prosperous FBO.
And that's what I'd like to see, is how that is quantified in planning as part of our business plan is their success or their at least continued operation.
So.
Oh, yes.
My question, Counselor Bennett's question was one of mine too, was the property on the mobile homes. But when I first started hearing about this, I'm obviously new this year and I don't have a whole lot of history on this, but I was hearing about two different options of runway extension. This is the longer of the two, I believe. Am I right or am I making that up?
This is correct. So, as we've evaluated the types of aircraft that come in here, you're going to have one chance to extend a runway. So, there have been, I've actually heard three numbers tossed out there, seven hundred feet, a thousand feet, and twelve hundred feet. To take advantage of the aircraft types that are in this picture over here on the slide, even some of the RJ's that were operated by Delta Airlines here in the past, on a hot summer day, those aircraft could not take off fully loaded. So, depending on the type of aircraft, the key is making sure that your market will be able to afford, the runway length can afford the larger style of aircraft or even smaller aircraft that just have narrower and shorter wings. The price difference for the runway extension is not, it's not a per foot price. So, for example, if you were to cut the extension in half, you wouldn't just cut the cost in half. You have to move all your navigation aids, you have to move all your equipment, you have to mobilize. A lot of those are key factors that the price will be the same whether you move them twelve hundred feet out or seven hundred feet out. So, I think looking long-term into the future, you have one opportunity to get to maximize your runway length. Now, council can do what they wish, but considering that.
That's what I wanted to add too. As we've learned more about this in the last few weeks, we are realizing that if we go after FAA funding, it's probably a once-in-many-many-years opportunity to get that funding for a runway extension. So, to preserve options for into the future, it's probably the wisest decision to do the full extension now. Whether or not that means we really focus on passenger air service is a different question. But it would keep the options open for the future, and that's why we presented that here.
Okay. So, I haven't had a chance to review that graphic over there. What kind of planes are we talking about, biggest planes being able to land on a twelve-hundred-foot extension?
You're talking primarily about seven-three-sevens or MD-eighties.
Okay.
That's the maximum you'll see here. You won't see a wide-body aircraft. You won't see seven-five-sevens.
Right, I'm, okay. I'm just a little concerned about that big of a plane flying over my ward and the complaints we're going to get out of it. I mean, I get planes flying pretty close to my house that I just moved from. If we got a seven-three-seven right over top of that, I'm just concerned about what South Salem is going to say for that flight pattern, so.
One thing is you have to consider with that size of aircraft, you're going to have less frequency if you do get passenger service.
Understood, but cargo, I mean, I would assume that'd be part of what we're looking at here, correct, for commercial purposes?
We would want to look at cargo service. I don't know whether cargo carriers would fly that size of plane though, Mark.
Considering you're close proximity to Portland, I don't think you're going to, FedEx, for example, and UPS are not going to move or split their operation. That wouldn't warrant that sort of service. A lot of things that come down FedEx right now are UPS come down on truck. Although we do have one flight, UPS and FedEx do have one flight per day that come in here currently. Those are on the smaller caravan-sized aircraft.
Thank you. So, I'm very impressed with how much you've done since you've been here. I think you've done more in three weeks than I've seen out of the airport in ten years, so congratulations. I want to, I have a couple of questions for you. The first question has to do with slide twenty, and it refers to the local match of about four hundred K that could come from the city. Where exactly, where'd you take that from the city? Would that come out of what fund?
Well, this is looking into twenty-fourteen, so this is probably worst-case scenario. We have, this will be part of the business plan, so we carefully evaluate that and make sure that we, again, maximize those revenues. There may be an opportunity for the state aviation program to come up with those dollars. And the earlier we start planning for those things, the better awareness we'll have, and I think the more partners we're going to find in that. So, again, we put this in here because that's probably the worst-case scenario for the city.
As we do more development, we think there are many opportunities to do corporate jet development as well as aviation-type of industries. That'll bring in more revenue, and if we know we're going to go forward with this scenario, we can start saving, setting money aside for the issues too.
Okay, I just always get that kind of sinking feeling, thinking about four-hundred thousand dollars and where it's going to come from in our budget. So, just kind of worried about that. I was wondering if you might chat with the FAA sometime and ask them if they do indeed employ a relocation policy? If you did want to tend to look into purchasing this property. I'm very concerned about the residential property on slide nineteen. That tends to be another fragile population. A lot of those people can't really afford to live anywhere else. There was very, very negative public relations in the paper from this, some dislocation of some older people that lived in a mobile home park in Portland. It wasn't for the airport, it was for development, and that was very, very bad PR. I do not want to see the city in that type of situation. So, if the FAA does have some sort of relocation policy, we should get it, study it, and employ it if we need to. I know BPA does. I don't know if FAA does.
That's a very good question, and the FAA does have a very strict policy. I've gone through it with them.
Okay.
So, what it entails is you get appraisals on the property. You have to find certainly decent, safe, and sanitary conditions that typically are better than what you currently have. And then you take a look at options. It includes the relocation, the cost, packing your boxes, and any other incidental costs that go along with it are all grant-eligible. So, it's a pretty comprehensive program.
And let us proceed carefully and with great slowness and wisdom. If we do tend to go that way, we should talk to people there and let them know that this is a possibility. I mean, we're not considering it right now, but this is something that people should never be surprised to find out that their property is being sold. So, just want to really keep that in mind. That's a fragile population out there.
Right, and part of the key is the planning and the communication. You're absolutely right. So, if this project would be on the drawing board for two thousand fourteen, it gives us ample time to tell, to share with them the fact that we will have a plan and we will assist them at every juncture with the relocation.
Yes, thank you for thinking of that. That is all.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Mark, the, if council made decision to go for the twelve-fifty extension, impact on required amendments to the tower. Anybody done any stretch to see what the tower amendment's going to need to look like? That tower is built for the current level of runway, so.
The tower, the good thing is the tower can see the complete end of the runway, so there's no obstruction problems with that extension. If the extension were going the other direction, that would be an issue.
Okay.
So, going this particular direction is, we've looked at the line-of-sight issue, that will not be a challenge.
Other questions?
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to share with council and with staff. And I've had a chance to talk with Linda Norris and with John Wales. I haven't had a chance yet, Mark, to come and visit with you about these ideas and others of you, all of you. I would have been thinking about the airport and thinking about the McGill Crest urban renewal area, which is adjacent to the airport. And I really think of both of those as potentially great diamonds in our economic development planning. And I'd like to think of the two of, I'd like to explore the two of them in relation to one another and in relation to the kinds of maybe aviation-related industries that we might attract to the McGill Crest area and then also the air cargo, et cetera, opportunities that are there that would be an enhancement to businesses that might want to locate in the McGill Crest industrial area just because of ease of moving their product right over to the airport for flights out. But I think that we have to look at the airport and the urban renewal area there with a wider scope maybe than we have in the past. My experience with the airport, we've always, I think that we've spent a great deal of time, and understandably so, thinking of it as a passenger airport and not really maximizing the avionics and the cargo. So, I'm pleased that I had a receptive ear. I've had some receptive ears and we're going to go out and talk with some businesses and we want input from staff and council also. And then the, my second comment has to do with the, looking at that residential area. And my concern also about dislocating people. But it could be a plus in that if we, if we look ahead and we know what we're going to do with the airport, then we can assist people in their moving forward and in their planning and so that it doesn't have to be a negative kind of situation.
Exactly, and I went through this in Spokane. We did a runway extension. We told people about three years beforehand what was going to transpire. We only had to purchase one property, but the owner came to us and said, you know, I was just thinking about remodeling my home. He said, but maybe I'll save that money and sell it to you and then I can relocate. So, the earlier you can get the information out, the more positive it is so people can make their long-term plans.
Counselor Tesler?
Thank you, and you would have a most sympathetic ear with me because McGill Crest, I call it the fab-
I call it the Fab Four. This is what I'd like to see in McGill Crest. I'd like to see sidewalks. I'd like to see a decent road without potholes that eat your car. I'd like to see a left-hand turn lane, and I'd like to see streetlights. Those are four very basic amenities that are missing on McGill Crest, and so if we could just do that, you know, I think, wow, that would just be, you know, that would be great. And, I do wish to comment that, you know, it's, it is, it can be a positive, but it's not my house.
I know.
And if it was my house, it wouldn't be a positive. It would be a negative. So, I just want to be really sensitive to that situation, so that's all I'm concerned about.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Mark, the, with the existing, is this the RSA, runway safety area? With existing RSA and the blue trapezoid, FAA has changed their regulations, obviously the dimensions of the trapezoid are now such that we're not in compliance, or we're on some sort of a waiver. Would the FAA be asking us to address that situation, whether or not we were extending the runway?
I believe so, but it's one of the reasons we want to start the planning early, so all these issues are identified.
Okay, and the, I have a concern as well about McGill Crest. Hopefully, with that urban renewal area, we'll be able to, so, we can't do the airport master planning without the McGill Crest piece, they've got to go hand-in-hand. But, the intersection of Twenty-Fifth and Madrona, that's the main-
Right here?
No, down, right in there, off the chart. If we're looking at McGill Crest, that's just sort of an awkward right-turn-
Oh, I'm sorry, McGill Crest over here.
Weird area, and you've got a lot of, that's the commercial entrance for a number of the vehicles, to include FedEx and others. So, I would be interested if we're going to look at the urban renewal, that we also look at improving that intersection, just from a vehicular standpoint. We're never going to get folks out there walking if we don't even at least improve the vehicle's safety there. So, Twenty-Fifth and Madrona's got to be part of that same discussion.
John?
Maybe, just for clarification, just to remember that the McGill Crest urban renewal area is a one-project urban renewal area, and it is the, it is for the improvements on McGill Crest. But, that doesn't mean that having, getting that in place, the thing that is so appealing about McGill Crest is that it has buildings, and it has buildings that are existing, and there's an inventory. And, when you have companies that were looking all over the city coming and wanting to locate right now in an existing building, we don't have that at the airport. And, that's a tremendous asset to have. It's also got rail spurs, it also has a lot of other wonderfully attractive features, proximity to I-five as well. So, combined and getting the synergy going is a terrific idea, and a good strategy.
Good, good.
So, this was a tremendous amount of information. I thank you for the great questions.
Thank you, thank you for this. And, we'll be seeing you again, when?
On May ninth.
May ninth, okay. All right, thank you, and we now need to get across the way.